Good evening. I'd like to call upon Board, a regular Board meeting and Board trustee of East Central ISD being held on May 15th, 2025, beginning at 5:00 PM. At the East Central High School, Capes area 71, 73, 76, 28, San Antonio, Texas, 78, 26, 34. That's it, sir. I have a little call for you.
Yes ma'am. Ginger Friesenhoff?
Here.
David Santos?
This is from your regular here.
Here.
James Mokki?
Here.
Delvis Davis here. And Eddie O'Turris?
Here.
Please, please.
Next, we have the prayer and the pledge.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Principal Melvin.
Good evening, Mr. Tuskana, this is Press and School Board. I have the pleasure of introducing our JROTC color guard, who consist of several amazing students. Cadet Private Allison Brunner, Cadet Private Amaya Potter, Cadet Sergeant Black Williams, Cadet Captain Ayesha Cho, and Cadet Major Melissa Arms Kelly, who will lead us in the invocation, followed by the singing of our national anthem by the East Central High School Choir led by Mrs. Sturm. So, please stand for our invocation and presentation of colors and the singing of our national anthem. Melissa?
Please like ahead to the meeting. Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts, thankful for the opportunity to serve our students, families, and staff of East Central Independence School District. We ask for your presence in this meeting tonight. Grant each member of this board wisdom and liberty as they make decisions that impact the futures of our school and community. Bless our administrators, educators, and support staff, who work tirelessly to provide a safe and enriching environment for learning. Watch over our students, guard them, protect them, and help them grow into compassionate, capable leaders. We place this meeting into your hands. May peace and purpose guide us. In your name we pray, amen.
Forward march.
Carrying the American flag is Cadet Sergeant Blake Williams. Carrying the Texas flag is Cadet Private Allison Brunner. Guarding the American flag is Cadet Captain Ayesha Cho. And guarding the Texas flag is Cadet Private Amaya Potter.
Oh sing, can you sing by the dawn's early light? Once so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleam. O'er the treetops and by its stars we'll prepare on lost sight. O'er the land of the waters whose so good love we stream. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, they flew through the night. The top there was still there, still there. O'er the treetops and by its stars we'll prepare on lost sight. O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave American.
You may be seated. How about a small round of applause for our East Central Color Guards and our fantastic choir led by Mrs. Sturm. Bittersweet evening tonight. I was talking to some of the choir students. And if you guys heard from, Melissa, it is their last, tomorrow is their last official full day at East Central High School. So, a big round of applause to our seniors and their board members. As a small token of appreciation to our school board and admin council, please accept these gifts from our various teachers' programs. So, the birdhouse was put together by our ag program, painted by our art students who collaborated to make the birdhouse. The floral arrangements by our floral design students in our ag department. So, you probably have seen that fidget. I thought it was a jewelry box myself. But it's an EC stamped, created jewelry box fidget. You can turn it, twist it when you're sitting there. Or you can hide your favorite jewelry in there as well. And also, a shirt that was custom designed by our cast students. So, thank you for all of your hard work. We really appreciate everything that you guys do for all of us here in Central. Thank you to our parents and to all of our staff members that are here today. We have had a fantastic year and we're looking to an even better year next year. So, thank you, Ms. Tuskana.
So, the next item on the agenda is what we're all here for, awards and recognition. Mr. McKay?
Yes ma'am. Tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing many of our exceptional staff members from East Central ISD, who have reached a milestone in their careers in service to our community. We are honored to recognize our employees. And on behalf of the East Central family, congratulations to each of you on achieving this anniversary with our district. This evening, we are celebrating 2,195 combined years of service that you have dedicated to East Central. Like every employee in our district, you were hired with the anticipation of greatness and are being recognized tonight because you embody everything that is right about education. Some of you may have come to us right out of college and others with 20 years of experience, but all with a burning desire to positively impact the lives of our children. Without a doubt, whether they've been here for five years teaching in our classrooms or some in this room for 48 years, our loyal East Central staff are being recognized because they shape the future and are difference makers in our community. Our first group that we'll recognize tonight is our five-year service award recipients. If our five-year honorees wouldn't mind, go ahead and start standing up and head to the back. You're going to go right over there until you'll see a camera. And you're going to walk right down there in that little back line and you'll line up with Mr. Oliver. When you get there, I'll tell you what you'll do next. So, our group of five-year award winners, there are 65 across East Central, who have a combined total of 325 years of service. So, five-year recipients, you're going to set the bar so everybody understands what we'll do moving forward. So, as your name is called, Ms. Lozano, you will walk down the red carpet. You'll receive your gift. You'll stop for a picture. After you do that, you'll take your gift and you're going to head over to the other side of the black curtain where all the five years will line up for a large group photo. And then y'all may return back to your seats after that. Sound good? All right. First, we have Arda Rinta Lozano. Yvonne Moreles. Pristine Atal. DeAndrea Wilson. Jose Rivera. Alina Perez. Lindsay Williford. Brandy Noriega. Latitia Martinez. And Melissa McGee. So, we always want to recognize the family and friends of our honorees because we know the kind of commitment and sacrifice that it takes to serve in public education. We cannot be successful without the understanding, support of our family and friends. At this time, if you're a family or friend of any of our five-year honorees, would you please stand so we can recognize you as well? Please stand if you're a family member. If our 10-year recipients wouldn't mind heading to the back and we'll line up the same way and do the same thing. So, 10 years. If you haven't picked up your card, when you head back there, make sure you grab your card. Justin Breeden. Damian McGinnis. Donnie Bishop. Nicole Reed. Liliana Eskamia. Brenda Fuentes. Anna Silva. Violetta Berriantos. Crystal Flores. thirsty Canales. Karen Wildman. Inka Lopez. At this time, with the family and friends of our 10-year recipients, please stand so you may also be recognized. 10-year families. 15, if you can start heading to the back. If you're here for 15, start heading that way. Our 15-year recipients, we have 13 across the district who have contributed a total of 195 years of service. Carrie Kinder. Donna Sorcic. Victoria Mills. Angela West. Joshua Scott. Martha Ramirez. Heather Bonnet. Maureen Reed. At this time, would all of our 15-year recipient family and friends please stand so we can recognize you? Thank you for all of your support. If our 20-year recipients wouldn't mind heading to the back, begin lining up. We have 16 East Central family members across the district who have contributed 20 years each for a total of 320 years of combined service. Monica Davenport. Cecilia Rubay. Jessica Gonzalez. Antonia Portillo. Isola Martine. Christina Kent-Jew. Patricia Estrada-Mecca. Brock Chase. Denise Segura. Shane McKay. Would the family and friends of the 20-year recipients please stand so we can recognize you? 25, if you've got 25 years, please start heading to the back. We have 10 recipients across the district who have contributed 25 years for a total of 250 years combined. Sonia Blumberg. Suzanne Clough. Elizabeth Martinez. Sally Cortez. Darlene Embry. Allison Santos. Kathy Cook. Would the family and friends of our 25-year honorees please stand so we can recognize you? Thank you for all of your support. Our 30-year, if you've got 30 years, please start heading to the back. Sandra Detmar. Would the family and friends of Ms. Detmar please stand so we can recognize you? Next up, 35-year recipients. For 35-year recipients, can head to the back. All right, moving on to the next phase. We're going to ask if you are here because you are a retiree, if you would not do us a favor. Stay where you're at. Please stand in your space, please. So, if you are a retiree, can you please just stand where you're at? If you don't mind, we're going to dote on you here for just a minute. So, just stay put and take it all in because you've earned it. We are gathered here today not just to mark an occasion, but to celebrate a legacy. A legacy built over 625 years of dedicated service, unwavering commitment, and a profound impact that can only be made by those who have devoted their lives to this noble profession of education. To the 24 remarkable individuals that we'll be honoring today, we want to say thank you. Thank you for the early mornings and the late evenings. And some of you, the thousands of miles you've driven above us to make a difference in the lives of our students. Thank you for the endless hours spent teaching, guiding, mentoring, and inspiring generations. Thank you for the sacrifices that you have made, for the times that you've gone above and beyond, and for the moments that you have never given up, even when it seemed like the easiest path. Your loyalty and integrity have been the bedrock upon ECISD and has allowed us to continue to provide a tradition of quality education. You've been more than just teachers. You've been role models, confidants, and for many, a steady source of support during the most formative years of a student's life. The ripples of your influence extend far beyond the classroom walls, touching families and communities in ways that will never be able to be measured. As you stand on the precipice of this new chapter, we want you to know that you will be deeply missed. Your wisdom, passion, and the unique spark each of you brought to the work are irreplaceable. But even as we bid you farewell, we take comfort in the enduring impact you've made, the thousands of lives you've touched, the minds you've expanded, the futures you've helped shape. These are your lasting legacies. We want to thank you on behalf of the countless students whose lives you have impacted and the colleagues that have had the privilege of working alongside you throughout these years. Thank you to the 625 years of service, sacrifice, and love for this noble profession. May your retirement be filled with joy, peace, and appreciation you so richly deserve. Now you may line up to the back. Dodi Young. Kimberly Radevus. Margie Almorado. Melissa McGee. Michelle Kiyobasa. Maria Gould. Donnie Bishop.
Sally Cortez. Gina Ayala. And the family of Doyle Soden, receiving this award posthumously. Dr. Alma Rosa Martinez.
So at this time, if the family or friends of our retirees, if you would not mind staying in for us for a minute as well. Okay, we're gonna ask you to stay standing too. So please stay standing, your family and friends, stay standing. We would like to thank the family and friends for those who are retiring, and we really want to say thank you for the many ways that you've sacrificed for your loved one to be the committed educator that they are. Thank you for standing beside them and encouraging them. Thank you for allowing our students the opportunity to be blessed by their presence every day. Thank you for being the strongest supporter, the staunchest advocate, the shoulder to cry on, providing the needed hug, and the occasional inspirational speech to keep them motivated. We cannot express enough gratitude, we know that your loved one made an impact on the countless lives that they've touched, and we will forever be remembered. Thank you all so much. So we're moving on to a new group. This is a new award for us that we have not given out before in this ceremony. It's our Teacher Incentive allotment winners. This is the first time in EC Central ISD's history that we have the opportunity to recognize 21 teachers with the Teacher Incentive allotment. The Teacher Incentive allotment, known as TIA, gives teachers an accessible pathway to earning a higher income while remaining in the classroom, allowing them to make a greater difference in the lives of EC Central students. TIA elevates the teaching profession and allows EC Central to celebrate our top-performing teachers with compensation and recognition through teacher designations funded and approved by the Texas Education Agency. Designations are our distinctions awarded to highly effective teachers. TIA establishes three levels, you'll see it in the program, Recognized, Exemplary, and Mastered. Designations are awarded to teachers through ECISD's local designation systems or by achieving the National Award Certification. Teachers with an active National Award Certification are designated as recognized by the TIA. Teachers earning these awards tonight have demonstrated excellence in growing our students at exceptional rates. We are incredibly proud of the impact that they have had on the lives of our students, and we're excited to be able to reward you this time. So any of our teachers that are here tonight that are receiving the TIA, if you would not mind also lining up in the back, and they'll be able to help you. So our TIA recipients, please start heading back there.
Erin Barrett.
Congratulations.
Thank you, same to you.
What is your name?
Amanda Torres.
Amanda, where are you?
I have a friend.
Hi, I'm told you miss her.
Dana Carton.
We love her. She used to be at O'press, now at O'press. Amanda?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Kate Dillon. Pauline Delia. Darlene Embry. Carrie Garcia. Christina Gonzalez. Ashley Harris. Jennifer Lawrence. Rose Baldonado. Lori Warren Martinez-Carroll. Jessica Manta. Alyssa McGee. Megan Page. Valerie Regina. Rosyala Gremus. Amanda Torres. Sylvia Zamora.
Congratulations to all of our service award winners, our retirees.
I'm gonna call the meeting back to order at this time. Number six, I'm going to do this trustee report. Updates regarding ECISD, ECISD, the TPA Committee, and the trustee.
Hi, so I think since the last meeting, I tried to keep up. I post on social media, started sending photos, but we attended the Military Inauguration Ceremony, which was amazing, always one of my very favorite nights to see all these young people sign up for something that is really remarkable and scary. I would never do it, so that was super important for me. We went to Uvalde to Tazby Spring Workshop to learn more about what it takes to be a school board member, so it was great to hang out with some of my fellow board members. David's a scary driver, I'm just kidding, he's a great driver. We attended the Oak Crest Shoebox Fiesta Parade. Those kids did a great job with their shoebox floats, some of that was fun. And then the FFA banquet just the other day. I went to, on Tuesday, I went to the state capitol to see what our legislators are doing with our school funds and things like that, so that was really exciting to see which ones are for quality education and which ones aren't. So that was exciting. Yesterday, I don't know if you all keep up with my social media, but I did the reading challenge, the Bantor reading challenge, and I came in second place with my trophy. So I was able to share, a friend of mine hooked me up with some ice cream. I got 900 ice creams for my third grade friends. And yesterday, I went to Oak Crest and Solado. Today, I went to St. Clair Tradition and Honor. Tomorrow, I'll be at Harmony, Hanover Forest, and Pecan Valley to take a photo with my friends. They were super excited to see what they helped me earn, this big trophy, so that's it? Thank you.
It was a busy month, so I just had the pleasure of attending the Uvalde conference with my colleagues, and then of course, came over to the signing night evening, which was really nice, and then had the pleasure of attending the FFA banquet, which was also very, very nice. So that was me in this month.
Yes, myself, a little bit later month, a lot of work and travel with what I was doing, but did manage to make it over to the Fiesta Parade and took some pictures there with the colleagues and the kids, or why, reminded me of when I was in Harmony, the old ACDC storage, whatever it is down at this point. But had a wonderful time, experience there as well. And then I went over, I did go and visit Ms. Chase. We had a good little conversation and a meeting there, so I had to take a picture with her. Always a good invite, talked about a couple of things. And then I went over with my colleagues to Uvalde. I was the chauffeur that night, and I think Ginger could testify, I have a lead footy that night. She was in the back, she was flying in the back of the superbowl, so getting a little ill. So anyways, I ran into a former colleague of Uvalde, Amy, I believe it's Braver. I used to know her as Little Amy, so right into her over there. And then finished up over at Oak Crest, where I got to play chess. And I was an avid chess player growing up and got to play quite a bit in some nice tournaments way back in the day. And there, you see on the top left, me finishing off the move, so I had to finish this. I did make a promise to Principal Amy Lively there that I'd make, will make the exact same one to offer to any of your schools. I'm gonna buy her a very nice marble chess set to have for her club. It's gonna be the championship set that they will only get to use in the last two, the final two. And I'd love to start a competition between the other schools and anybody who signs up and says, "Yeah, let's do it," you'll get one, and I'm gonna probably try to do it at your college as well, so it doesn't matter, but I'll do it. So that was it for me.
Okay, I had a pretty busy month. Before I get into my pictures, I want to, today is National, for this week, I want to thank EC Central. I want to thank East Central Police Department for keeping us, our kids safe, for keeping our teachers safe all during the year. I want to recognize, Chief is not here, but I saw one of the officers in the back. Also, we had some good things happen here in East Central District the last couple of weeks. And I want to thank the community for passing the $300 million bond. And I thank the community. I want to thank everybody who campaigned. Our superintendent, Mr. McKay, our board president, everybody who campaigned. And I know it was a lot of hours, but we got across the finish line. So good things have happened here in East Central School District. Moving on, yeah, 55 brothers get their certification. I think that's amazing, amazing for 55 brothers to get their certification. I want to congratulate those students. I want to congratulate their teachers. And I think that's really wonderful for that to happen. Moving on, they tell me if you stir a horse's nest, you'll get stung. So so much stirred up our softball team. Because they're steam teams from the valley to the capital. They play tonight, and I want to congratulate them on a great postseason. I want to wish them all the luck tonight. And I'll get into my pictures right now. But I have to move on, okay. I think up here is the bike rodeo at St. Clair Elementary. And I think it was a great, they had San Antonio Police Department came out and supervised that. They had obstacle course, and they did a great job. And the kids really enjoyed it. I think I was the counselor at East Central Render. I think she, yeah, she went to the obstacle course. I mean, that's amazing. I'm telling you, she's on from the police bikes for this whole lot of years, and I'd like to recognize her. She got on that, went through the obstacle course, and I tell you, that was amazing to see her do that. Okay. Oh, look at that, man. Teacher Appreciation Day, that's yours truly there. And he's giving his teacher roles for Teacher Appreciation Day. I think at the bottom down there, I met Mr. The Cuswell over there at Legacy. We had a great visit. I moved on to, at the top up there, that's the vice principal up there. I went to visit Mr. Louis Flax. He teaches robotics over there at Legacy Middle School. Does a good job. I had some motion pictures that didn't come out, but he made some shoebox floats. He comes from a very athletic family. And I'll put it in quotes, several examples. If we go back to the years, his uncle was one of the best running backs. Come through San Antonio. He went on to play for University of San Antonio and Kansas City. If anybody knew, I'm pretty sure, gave him no warning in favor. So that's his uncle, so we have those left here, also that legacy. Okay. I went over to that Shoebox Parade, Mrs. Livingston and Mrs. Zano Marrieta. They invited me over to the Shoebox. That was really exciting. They always make sure that I appreciate it, so I can enjoy the festivities. Superintendent, I went to that ceremony, and I wanted to congratulate all the kids and all the students in the district who were superintendent of the month. And that was a great ceremony. Also last year, yours truly also, he was superintendent of the month in favor. Those two young ladies there, they were recognized by the Texas High School Coach Association. Secretary of the Year, that's Vanessa, and I really, those young ladies have never seen at an event. This year, I don't want to complain, and I want to congratulate those young ladies also. Vanessa, Vanessa, Athletic Office, recognizing the ladies, Camp of Texas, football, magazine. Okay, I want to also thank Mr. McKay. His pictures, preparing, presentation, does a great job, and I'm pretty sure he's been beautiful. But I want to thank him for preparing all the pictures for the year. Thank you so very much, yeah, appreciation.
We, and I also went to Oak Crest and went to the Fiesta, Shoebox Fiesta. And that was a tremendous sight, and it was, well, I'm sorry, I misspoke. This one was actually hot and force, but I did go, also, what threw me off was the chess playing. And my friend over there is a good chess player, and I enjoy chess as well. And he told me something before we started playing. He said, "I don't take it easy on anybody." So I took the cue, I went 3-0, and I didn't hold back. But I don't know how many to win, but. And I was looking at him, he said, "Don't take it easy on anybody." But that was hot and force. My grandsons, both grandsons, me and my beautiful wife had a great pleasure helping putting those folks together. You know, that's what grandparents do. Parents go come up, step up, grandparents do, so we did. And their smiles were worth it all. I wish you had sent the video, because it was kind of comical. They were riding in that little gator, that was the servant, and she made it funny. They were supposed to take off and wave, and I was gonna give them, and I did give the video. She says, "Watch, we're going backwards." Fun run, that was a lot of fun, seeing the joy on those small children's faces. And I wanted to say a special thank you to all those that put that on and worked with our kids to show them the importance of exercising and running, getting some of that energy out. Coach referred to the softball team. Those girls are electrifying. There's zero quit in girls. Went to, got to go follow them over, at each of the tasks they played. Every time I've seen them, they're just, you can tell that they don't look down on themselves. Even though it's four hundred and eleven to begin, but they don't quit. The other side there is sprint football. My son up there with Bill playing center, he's excited. We're excited to see him as well, and I thank all the coaches and all the effort that he put in. This round two, I called her my Spanish queen with her suave little there. She's faithful to be by my side, or at least supporting me as well as the kids. She takes great photos too, so I appreciate having her as part of the cooperation and all of this stuff. They are the right decision. They did her. Just some outstanding students and the accomplishments of all the accolades. It goes without saying, they're in the middle right-hand corner there, in the middle. That's a good friend of mine, Gomacho, last year, he has two little kids, he's going to come in on the way. I called him, he was my training, and he's kind of, I remember his kids were tiny. And to see him grow like that, and what a program we have here, great, great citizens of the school and that family. And then there at the bottom, they recognize the future teachers. And I think that we, as a society, this is society, has kind of given a, not so much attention to what the value that it really is of teaching. And I want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you to all of you that sacrificed. And it is a sacrifice, what you do, but it doesn't go without being noticed, and appreciate it more than before. Round three, young ladies just literally knocked it out of park. And the excitement on their faces, I'll tell you all the joy that it brings. It's amazing to see them, and you can tell the unity, and you can tell that they bought into the coaches. You can tell the love and the admiration that they have for the coaches. And it's, again, you turn the coaches around for those kids. EC Spring Show, young ladies did an amazing performance. At the end there at the bottom right, trading the Curves hat. And I thought it was a beautiful picture of passing the honor of the hat, that's a real. What an amazing performance that they performed, and all the, the carload of courses. I'm gonna fast forward really fast now. Superintendent of the Month, all the smiling faces, they got these medals and what deserved. Mother's Day, Sarah, Sarah Nata, I won't put your name, in Uvalde, you know what it is. The Madiachis did an amazing job. My mother-in-law was just thrilled with the heritage that we have. And these kids pour their heart, pour their hearts out. You can tell all the reward that goes into it.
Hi, May is much help. And I was so excited to see all of the resources and the activities for families and communities. And so I appreciated them, looking at that. In that same day, I took a quiz by Education Week. And it says, "How much do you know about student mental health and well-being?" And it also says, "Challenge your colleagues, share this quiz." So this person shared that with the superintendent. I'm not gonna share what I made, just put it on there right there. Okay. But seriously, this is a really important thing to do. I attended a webinar as well through Education Week as well. And just looking at the resources that are available, it is a case study in Troy that looks at how we can have resources and how the community, the students, as well as the staff and the teachers. I know we hear about mental health all the time, but it is real. And I would just encourage you to find out more, so that we can all be a great support system, all of us, for our students and our community. The person had said that I had an awesome opportunity to visit a relative. A groundbreaking addition, pretty, off of Goliath, with the NRP group. I'm not sure if this is relevant in our area, I mean, so, nevertheless, they are working ground for 20, no, 349 of the total housing for families in that area. It's connected to the city base, and it's just a wonderful opportunity. They have a city council, and that just, just there, and other people that have lived in the community. Looking at how the south side, the southeast side is just growing and building. I'm curious to know more about that, so that's it for me.
I'm a new school worker, so I've been a lot of training, a lot of hard work. I did get to attend the Spring National, I appreciate you so much. And you can see there is often, each one, they keep going on. Also, I attended the Eastern Siren, it was really important to me, for retired military. So I really, I say, I always do start a list, support our country. Also, the superintendent, the board, thank you. That was, that was, there's a lot of good, there's a lot of stuff I want to see. I'm going to make it through high school. And I got to attend one of the softball tournaments, I'm gonna get to stay till the end, but they were ahead when I left. That's what I'm hoping for.
So that improved item 6.1, the next one is 7.1 Board Goal Update.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Mr. Holbert. You can follow along with the slide deck in your packet. Tyler made that, follow along on his information. John, I'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Tiscano, members of the board. Thank you for the chance to briefly walk you through our data from May. It's gonna largely mirror what we've done in the prior months. So the first one here shows our attendance. So last year we were at 91.3%, so we're tracking for almost a 1% increase on attendance. Where 10% is a pretty big, pretty big chunk. So we didn't quite meet our goals, but we're making big gains on attendance. This is the chart I've shown you for the last six months. That shows compared to the same time last year, how do we do campus by campus? And so you can see some big gains throughout the district. But again, Castis is making a huge gain with over 2%. Kind of that blue-ish, greenish color, those are the ones that are over 1%, so that's a pretty big gain. Then we've got some other ones with a positive gain. What I want you to see there is at the end, we did lose a little bit of steam here at the end. You can see some of them dropped off a little bit compared to how we did in prior school year. And so a couple of them did a little lower than they were last year. We can track our discipline goal, so that was one of our big goals for the year, is around discipline. I know Shane provides a more detailed report, but overall, our goal was to get to 70% of the number of referrals from prior year. And our latest data says we're right on track to meet that goal. And we've got a break here, campus 40, the ones in green are below that 70%. Does that make sense? Like, the goal is to get 30% less, so 70% of the referrals is a good thing. So the lower the number, the better. And then you can see everybody made progress so far. Again, it's like the attendance, it's year over year, so it's, how did we do last, how did we do in the same time last year? And so we're getting to the end of the year, and it looks like we're gonna make some progress there. We did have a company come in, and we did our behavior systems. And we saw that we had about a 9%, like a 100-point scale. We made about a 9-point jump on our systems. And what I can say is that the campuses who score the highest here have the highest behavior system. So what we know is we do great preventive work, have really clear rules and systems. It makes a big impact on the discipline numbers. And so we're still talking about how to get even more aggressive. We're not happy, we're not satisfied, we want to get into next year's work. And so every campus and department is currently engaged in our needs assessment, really looking at their data, saying what happened, why did that happen, what do we need to do differently next year? And so we're trying to get aggressive and try to keep that push, keep that positive momentum. I want to give you a brief update on our long-term goals. So you have five long-term goals. The first one was around the third grade, students getting to meets-grade level on the STAR test. Now, we won't see STAR results for a couple more weeks, so it'll be the end of the month before we start to get preliminary data from STAR. But we do have end-of-year testing, so we can kind of predict how we think we better do. So in blue, you've got last year's data. In yellow, you've got the goal we want to be next year. And so I put it red there in the middle, where our mid-year data suggests that we're doing that. So it looks like in third grade, left is reading, that we're making progress towards the goal. Math, if you see, we're making progress towards the goal. We can keep that trend going for you, but if you go to fifth grade, so fifth grade, the reading one didn't make as much progress. You can see the red one is projecting a little bit lower than where we were before. But the math is making some progress, not as much as we saw at third grade. You can see how that red's a little higher than the yellow. Keep it going here, we go to algebra, so we have a goal for eighth graders to get to meets on the algebra test of our year, five long-term goals. And it's running comparable on that metric based on our end-of-year testing. I don't want to really give her open surprise, because in a couple minutes, she's gonna share good news with you. I don't want to give her any surprise. But I have two goals around CC more, and I do want to update it. So our 11th graders, you can see, we haven't historically tracked college readiness as tightly there. But we do have the number for you showing, we were at 11% before, and I believe that says 17% now from our 11th graders being college ready all. So before they even finish their 11th grade year, they've already demonstrated a level of college readiness. You can see our goal, our ambitious goal for them, that next year's we're at 46%. percent. Again, forgive you, Dr. Holman, for ruining the good news, but if we talk about college career military readiness, which we know is part of state accountability, we know that that's an important factor in there. You can see our last year number there in blue, and you can see our goal in yellow, and we're actually ahead of what, not only where we were last year, not only our goal for this year, but yeah, here in Alice, there you go. So great news, we're actually ahead of where we thought our goal would be for next school year. And so that's great news, and a ton of hard work from Dr. Holman, Lauren, her whole team, working with Mary Alice, Fatima, and the awesome people over in Central High School, from the APs to the deans, everybody working hard together, teachers and the kids. And so we are, we are expecting big gains on our CCMR measurement from state accountability. I've got two more slides before I go to Dr. Holman. I've got a projected accountability for you. So again, we don't have the end-of-the-year accountability from our campuses, so we don't have state test scores, we won't until later, but what we do have is our end-of-the-year testing, and we know that it does a pretty good job of predicting where we'll be. And so I wanted to give you a little chart showing you what we saw based on our testing. So on the right in gray, there's a key, that little key says that if there's a little minus sign, that we think that they might've gone down a little bit. The plus sign is, hey, there's a small, small but noticeable increase there. The double pluses are the big gainers, so big gains on state accountability, we believe. NA, so honor didn't exist last school year, so it's hard to compare their accountability to a rating that didn't exist, so honor hasn't been hanging. And then I think one or two, two schools have a similar rating where we think it's gonna be plus or minus a little bit. And for my friend, Miss Lively, I'm just gonna give a plug, that our testing actually does both English and Spanish, which can cause the projection to be a little low for Salado and Oak Crest, and I say that okay in the slide, but. And so what we're saying is, we think it's comparable, internally, we know it may actually be a little higher than what that's saying. And so that's okay in the slide, the injustice there. Okay, so, and then if I could just briefly talk about a couple of those double plus campuses for you. So like Salado, we saw huge gains on math, and so we're projecting where we see those state scores. That worked with Triana, you know, remember, Triana was an A math teacher, and then she went in and has an NCLP back in the day, did some amazing things in math over there, and then she went to Legacy and did some great things in math. And so this was, we're projecting the biggest gain we've seen over there with that Salado crew, so we're excited, looking forward to seeing a big gain off of Salado. Sinclair, Mr. Harvey, the literacy power during games this year, right, sir? And so we're expecting some real, so a real nice bump on Sinclair's scores this year. Tradition, tradition, we think is gonna be a huge gainer. Can I just give a plug here into like, from going through your behavior systems, making things run, your data meetings, the focus on data, the way that your teachers are operating, going in classrooms, you can see the faces of the kids on the behavior, like, there's so many systems you guys bolstered this year. I think that all those awesome things are powering your breakthroughs, that we're expecting a huge, a huge bump based on the scores we're seeing. Tradition, we've been tracking that most of the year, seeing a real positive number. CAST, can I say CAST? So one of the things about CAST lead that I want you to remember is that accountability uses CCMR, that's old data. So that's one of our objections to this, because the data's old. And so last year, they made a big gain, they had one hundred percent of their kids CCMR ready at CAST, one hundred percent. But it didn't go into last year's accountability because the state delays it a year. So you're gonna see the vote, when they publish reports over the next, you know, month or whatever, CAST is gonna go way up because that one hundred percent. In addition to that, they had ninety-eight percent graduate, that's a huge, huge number. Again, it's lagging, it doesn't come in until this year. East Central High School, we know, we went from, Amanda, can you give me the exact numbers? It's like thirty-six percent up to like eighty-one percent. Am I saying that right? College ready, that's a huge increase we made from in the thirties to the eighties. That's gonna power a huge, huge increase on our accountability at East Central High School. And so we're gonna see, we're gonna see a significant increase there. I'm gonna let Dr. Holman finish with some of the good news from CCMR.
Good evening, Mr. Presses, President Presses and Mr. Tiscano, thank you for allowing me to be here and talk to you about where we are currently sitting with our CCMR accountability. So I am actually way more excited than Jonathan even described, to be here tonight, to tell you guys that as of yesterday, Ms. Gomez and her team and my team have been significantly celebrating that we have reached ninety-five percent of our graduating class being college prep military. So, we do, we're, we're colleagues, we're teachers, we're students, and we anticipate that to potentially be a couple of percentage points higher as they're really kind of pulling in some kids and kind of holding a hostage on some senior days right now, so we're really excited for that. You'll see thirty-five percent of our graduating class currently is meeting a career readiness indicator. So just to remind you, that means they are either graduating special education with IEP and workforce readiness, or they have graduated with industry-based certification aligned to their career technical education pathway. And so this, we, it, we had been kind of warning you that we would see a large jump towards the end of this school year. We had a large number of those students actually taking the leak exam, and we do anticipate more coming in. We have students testing tomorrow, we have students testing all throughout next week, and even a little bit into the summer, so we're excited to see that go up. But the biggest gains that we'll see here right now is our college readiness. And so Ms. Gomez and her team have been really, really mindful and driven and just laser-focused on finding every single student that has not met their indicators, utilizing Texas College Bridge to the best of our ability, utilizing our college prep classes and TSI, SNT, VCT to get those students ready. So we're really, really proud of the work there. And then of course, we have CAST lead high school, and so if you look there, they have been trending at a hundred percent of their students being college prep military ready since January, but we did see a huge jump in those students that are career ready, so they went from twenty-five to forty-seven percent this month alone, so we're really proud of them. And then just a few things to kind of wrap up our year with CCMR right now. We met our goals, we got that big green check, we're really excited about, but we're finishing up our IBC testing. As of, a couple of, as of last week, when this was turned into board, we had three hundred and twenty-three students that had earned an industry-based certification this year. So everything from education aid to nursing aid to medical assistance, our welders that were certified, we have some business professionals that are certified, construction, all of those, so we're really excited. We reached our threshold for outcomes bonus, so if you remember, outcomes bonus is an additional amount of funding that we earn for students if they meet TSI metrics, and they either earn an industry-based certification, or they go into a college or university in the fall. And so, or if they are special education and earn an IBC, or if the student is in the military. So Lauren, our coordinators, we can really close tabs on that, we did meet that threshold, so we will, any additional student that we gain at this point that goes into college with TSI compliance in the fall, will get at least an additional three thousand dollars added to our outcomes bonus for the following year. So I believe right now, we're anticipating, we're seeing around a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. We anticipate twenty-one students are listed in the military, which is roughly three percent of our students this year. And then moving forward, we're working with Ms. Gomez's team to really focus on shifting that, the focus of where we are focusing our college ready to our junior class. And then we are planning for a very early development of Texas College Bridge in the fall this year, and we really hope to have some early gains. And then we are utilizing some dual credit pilots in the fall as well, for some of our juniors to get them. And as always, if you would like more data, there is links that Jonathan has so graciously included in your packet for you that you can always look back at, and if you have any questions, I'll answer them.
Back to the discipline part. So, so I see, I see the numbers, and I think last month, I don't think I was as clear as I could have been. I think my, my biggest concern, I see the numbers, and I, I like the trending down, but I don't, and maybe I don't know how to ask, but I think that's one of the things that I'm planning for this summer, to, to come up with, with a plan, a strategy. To me, it's not, it's not about the numbers, because if all we're trying to do is meet numbers, to me, sometimes some things might get left unpacked, right, that's human nature. I say that, that's happening, but it could. And I just want a better understanding or clearer perspective. What I want is, is the discipline, I want you to know that we have your back if you're gonna discipline the kids, right? It's not, we're not trying to hide stuff, and, oh, we don't wanna let the board see, you know, the bad stuff, we get it, right? So I don't know how that looks yet, I'm gonna work on it, we'll get it, I'll get a better way to present it to you, where you can get some understanding. And, but, but I appreciate what you're doing, I know it's a challenge, I know it's hard, but I just want you, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. It's not about, let's keep the numbers low because we're afraid of what the board's gonna do. I want you to know that, I'm speaking for the board, I'm speaking for me, that I want you guys to know that we have your back, the board, make sure that it keeps happening. Then I got your back. I just want holistic numbers, not just, and again, I don't wanna be sound accusing for you, I just want to make sure. Still, it ain't coming out right yet, but I'll get it, okay? I promise, I will get it out to you right, I know it's in my head somehow, I just can't get it out, but at least I want to let you see, and let you know.
Sure, I'm sure, I thought with you. We haven't figured it out either, but we've been thinking about what you're saying. We're thinking about maybe something for next year might be looking at time lost in the classroom because of discipline. Does that make sense? Like, is it easy, is it slightly different number? Like, I'm not sure that gets at it either, but like, we're internally trying to channel some of the same ideas, like, what would it, like, what would really paint the picture better? And what we know is that attendance is important, because we have strong teachers that when they're in the classroom can learn more. I don't know if we figured it out yet either, but when you, when you have more insight, please share it with us, we'd love to work with you and get you guys what you need to see it. And I think, I think we're all of like mine, that like, numbers on a page don't mean anything. We want, we want actual impact, like, we want to do things that matter. And so I, I feel like we're on the same page, and let's keep, let's keep talking until we figure it out.
Sounds good, yeah. And I think too, my, my is to dispel the perception, I mean, sometimes parents, we get some, I get questions, or I get comments, and I just wanna make sure that what we're saying, I give numbers, and they're like, no, you don't understand, I, I, I'm, I see my kids are telling me, and I see these things happening, and it's, you know, there's fights every day, how can those numbers be right? And I don't have an answer. That's, that's what I'm trying to do, to, 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 so, we, I, we'll figure it out.
That's all, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, we'll, we'll also continue to look at the actual fraction, side-by-side comparisons to tease out the seriousness behaviors, and look at over time, are they increasing, are they decreasing? Additionally, we do have the annual review from a third party that evaluates our behavior systems, school to school, across the system. That would be good information to share with the boards, and they can see the correlation between really strong school-wide behavior systems and reduced student misbehavior over time, especially seriousness behavior, something we've done in the past that we may need to also include, so that we have a better line of sight into perceptions, is what are teachers saying, and what are parents saying in terms of survey data, right? And we can compare over time as well. And then looking at our student self-efficacy data, right, from Panorama, are, are students over time feeling like they have someone, that adult, trusted adult they can go to and all these sorts of things. So I think there's just a lot of data that we, we do look at, this, this data that we're tracking here is just really leading that, but it doesn't necessarily indicate or differentiate the nature of the behaviors, it's just indicating to us that we're making progress, but not the qualitative progress that you're describing. So we'll do a better job of making sure we assemble that, and that we're looking at it all taken together to make sure that the board also can see what we're seeing in terms of qualitative improvements we're making, and where some opportunities still lie within our school system. Because we do see when we have principal turnover, leadership turnover, for example, you might see a campus that had really strong behavior systems and really improved behavior outcomes, and then those systems, we lose them as a priority in the transition sometimes, and then you see student behavior increase, student, the attendance decrease, the nature of the behavior, teacher turnover, and morale starts to be impacted, so it's all interrelated. And so we've got the code and how to crack it, but we need to make sure that as a, as a school community and board, we've got clear, because we do have to, probably does have to interact with the community, when all you see is perception on social media, or perception from one student or one adult, and that's all you're hearing, the, your perception's your reality, so we need to do a more comprehensive job there. We'll work on it, Mr. Press. So also with this particular monthly presentation, I hope, I hope what the board is beginning to see is that we took your name, and we've made a strong commitment to student outcomes. And we've made a strong commitment to be transparent about student outcomes and being aspirational about our goals for student outcomes. And so as the year has went on, you're seeing the fruits of some of that labor, but you're also seeing there still are some hotspots, some opportunities to continue to mine for where our next best set of decisions are, because as we know, our North Star goal is that eighty percent of our schools by the end of this decade are in DAB schools, and there's not gonna be a DRF. And it doesn't matter if accountability changes, it doesn't matter if it's more rigorous, it doesn't matter if it becomes more unfair and unreasonable, we, we don't care. We're gonna continue to make sure that our kids outperform their own expectations of themselves, and we're gonna hold a high standard, and we're gonna make sure that our structures and systems are such that our kids are gonna thrive. So much of the outcomes that are happening here at high school today are really superficial compared to what they're going to be as we start to hit those long-range goals with our earliest learners. As more and more children earlier become literate and become critical thinkers and problem solvers mathematically, you're gonna see them college-ready at a higher percentage, you're gonna see career-ready at a higher percentage, and you're gonna see them taking more advanced coursework and earning multiple industry certifications. And so it's all interrelated, and the direction we're heading this year is unlike ever before, but it's just the beginning, it's just the beginning.
Yeah, one more thing too, I didn't wanna sound, leaving on a negative note, thank you so much for all the great views, and, and believe me, that's exciting. And, and what thrills me is, is we have such great, great programs here, and it's just one of those things, I just want it to where it helps you, right? And so I appreciate what y'all, so thank you, please don't take it as a negative. Okay, great.
All right. Thank you. And the next item is pathway to radiology update. Mr. Tiscano?
Yeah, so I just wanted to take a minute to bring the board up to speed on a, on a program change. We're very excited about the continued progress that our PTEC program is making. There has been a change, so one of the programs within the PTEC pathway became inaccessible or unavailable to our students. And so the team led by Dr. Holman, along with collaboration with, with the rest of the staff, the high school and higher education partners, and business and industry partners and healthcare system, were able to respond, and I think what we're presenting to you tonight, we're really excited about, it actually is better, I think, than where we were. We were able to also interact with, with students and families in the program this past week, and the, the, the feedback and the responses is also very positive. So we just wanna make sure the board has a complete understanding of the changes that were made and what opportunities there will be for our students in the PTEC program as it relates to the radiology technologists.
Thank you, Mr. Tiscano. So I am here tonight to bring to you a roadmap that we actually are hoping to kind of flesh out for all of our programs of study, but this is one of our first drafts of this roadmap. We did make a few changes to our PTEC program, specifically that was offering a radiology program, or radiology program of study within that. And what we are doing is making dual-credit courses more aligned to an associate applied science and radiology technologist with San Antonio College. So what you'll see this roadmap does is it takes our students through from entering their eighth grade year at one of our middle schools, all the way through entry into the San Antonio College Radiology Technologist Program. And so what we've done is started out, you'll see that yellow bubble on the bottom on the far left talks to our students and our families about ensuring that as they're going through their eighth grade year of middle school, that they are having conversations about joining the PTEC program at East Central High School, specifically with this program of study in mind, and, during their eighth grade year. And then going into the green bubble, we're um, we're really talking about what's happening during their freshman, sophomore, and junior year of high school. And so, you'll see some dual-credit courses that are listed underneath the bottom of the road. And so, it says enroll in and complete dual-credit courses, specifically Math thirteen, fourteen, uh, two biology courses, an English course, and an art course. And those courses are directly aligned and pre-represented to admission into the Radiology Technologist Program at San Antonio College. And so, we crosswalk all of these things, working with our post-secondary partners to ensure that if students specifically have these courses, they will directly transfer over to that associate degree for them. Uh, moving into their senior year, uh, it's really important that students have work-based learning experience. And so, our health science programs focus on work-based learning experience through the lens of certificates and certifications. And so, what we want our students to understand is that it's not a matter of exactly what certificate you earn through that program, but it's a matter of the, uh, the hands-on experience that they get interacting with patients, with healthcare providers, with nurses, with doctors, um, all of the people that make a healthcare facility run. That is what is most important to those students moving forward into any healthcare profession. And so, we list the certifications that the students should be able to obtain during their senior year, including nursing aid, medical assisting, a patient care technician certificate, um, even we could go as far as pharmacy technology, those types of certifications. And so, encouraging our students to continue working toward that work-based learning. And then lastly, at the end of their senior year, we will work with them and through our partnerships with the Alamo Colleges District to get transcripts transferred over, to get our students ready, to get them into applied texts, to make sure that they are able to get their classes completed so that they can complete, uh, the Alamo Promise with a Associate of Applied Science in Radiology Technologist, and that would be through San Antonio College. So, we're really excited to be sharing this with our families and our students now so that they can see the direct alignment from entering our health science PTEC program all the way through them graduating high school and entering their post-secondary with a focus on what will happen at the end of that post-secondary credential. And so, we also have worked really hard to streamline what that four-year plan could, could look like for our students. And so, this is kind of a mock-up of that. Obviously, some things could change depending on what students have taken in middle school, um, if they've taken, you know, any additional credits or anything like that. And so, um, this, this specific four-year plan right here, um, also is showing students that there is a potential that during their senior year, uh, the goal of our PTEC program with students who are earning an AAS is that we get those students off of the campus their senior year and on their collegiate campus, whether it is San Antonio College or Pat, Palo Alto College. And so, you'll see that little caveat right above our PTEC logo of the option to potentially take, um, college courses towards their AAS during their senior years. So, uh, I'll, if you have any, any questions you have, we're really excited about this opportunity for our students and the potential of really scaling these roadmaps out to the rest of our campuses.
I've got one. Uh, I can attest to, well, this was available when my son was here. He did receive his, uh, his M.A. certification through here and has continued that even through college. Uh, but we also, we also updated on Saturday morning to government offices and clinics and some, uh, more comedic places to, uh, learn sports medicine. The experience that he gained was invaluable, hands-on, just to hear the watching, uh, the learning, uh, the shadowing, as was, do you have, is there anything that you all are involved in with that as well for kind of a work set to go along with the course?
Yes, so we do have partnerships in the industry. Uh, we send, actually, all of our nursing aid students do go out and they participate with, particularly Country Care Manor in La Verena is our site for that licensure. Um, our medical assisting students do go out to different clinics, uh, our school district clinics across the district. Uh, and we've also had partnerships with Methodist Healthcare Ministries, the state in the vascular clinic, uh, Methodist Metropolitan, those types of areas. Um, our EMT students have a partnership with the Methodist Hospital in Florisville, so they do write-alongs there, emergency rotations. Um, our, so yeah, every program that we have that we offer, we do offer business industry partnerships that our students go to to get that hands-on experience.
Well, I'm just, uh, work with say, I'm very excited with the class, we're very involved there as well. So, you're a great customer.
Yes, they're a great customer.
And I'd just like to say, I, I was just hoping to, when I saw this, I never learned some practice where I can help it. But the other thing is, when I look at this curriculum, what I see is a great opportunity for our students to have a good background, and if they, you know, choose to go into medicine, become radiologists, because the field of interventional radiology is brilliant. If you, uh, if you're getting treatments and different things like that, and you think you're ready to go see a surgeon, you'll, you'll see an interventional, um, radiologist, of course, you know, out there, and that's just a wonderful opportunity that starts in a school, and they can just go on with their lives, just, you know, life.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
My son, happily, this is a four-year plan. What happens to your test?
So, they'll get a certificate, uh, in one of the, um, credentials that we currently offer. So, it could be medical assisting, nursing aid, patient care technician, uh, registered pharmacy technician. Uh, and they will take that, their work experience surrounding the earning of that certificate, with it into their Associate of Applied Science to earn their, um, radiog, Radiology Technologist Certificate from the college system. Yes?
You mentioned that, so this quarter will start in the eighth grade, and not in the eighth grade, um, do you, the, uh, this quarter, but it won't start in the eighth grade?
No, sir. It won't start in eighth grade, but the conversations with the students do start in eighth grade so that they can make a decision early in the eighth grade year and start doing the prep work and the planning, uh, for us to get them into work in particular. Yes, sir?
The next item is seven point three personnel report. Mr. Tiscana?
Yeah, trustees, this month's report's in your packet. Uh, take a look at it. If you need any additional information, please let me know.
Item seven point four bond construction update.
Yeah, Mr. Thomas will give us some, an update for this month, and you can follow along if you'd like in the hard copy slide that he was laying back here. Thomas?
Good evening. We're going to start off with a little press. Uh, update on that one is the building is ready to open. The, talked to the staff today. They're going to move some teachers in this next couple of weeks before they leave for the, uh, the summer. So, we're looking forward to getting that open. A little bit of landscaping to do on the exterior of the building. Beyond that, the saw sewer type, we talked a little bit about that last, last board meeting. We are targeting, uh, Wednesday for that one to be completed. Valor Middle School is on track and is moving along very well. That team is very aggressive. The, all the administrative building, the academic wings are now dried. They're starting to dry them in. They're, they've got the waterproofing and they're moving the glass installation across the front of that building now. Getting the interior walls built and have about half of the HVAC units on the building currently. So, really making some good progress. They're going to close off about half of that building and start working on that interior. They're going to bring some millwork and additional things like that, the fixtures that are going to be in there. The, the walls are closing out here in the next couple of weeks on that portion of the building. Really good progress on the rest of the site as well. Those curves, the, the whole landscape is forming and, uh, getting drained for the football field, and then we'll start seeing that football field coming together there as well. Victory. This, the last concrete pour is tomorrow morning. Uh, looking forward to that one, closing that part of this, this project out. And we've got two sections of that building actually going up. The steel direction is moving extremely fast. That team is very aggressive as well. We're happy with the progress that's being made there, and they are on or ahead of track on that building as well. So, really excited to see that one come together on that. CTE, we now have a building that we can see. Uh, the structure's there. This week, they started putting the skin on, so the metal panels are starting to go to the exterior of that building. Here in the next four weeks, we're anticipating this one will be dried in, meaning that they will have roof and exterior panels completed. So, really right on track with that one as well. In addition to that, we have the high school project is about fifty percent of, uh, design development, and the elementary school number ten is about the same, about just shy of fifty percent of design development as well. Next month, we will be bringing you the C Mar, uh, for the high school so that we can get a general contractor on board so we can see some progress moving forward here several months after that. We're hoping to get, to turn and dirt out that way November, uh, timeline this next year. Do y'all have any questions? Yes, sir?
So, first, to go, to go with, uh, one of the, uh, concern about that, and last thing, if we, uh, follow up with Chief, if you did report on his, back line, if it falls for any of the builders, uh, the progress that you're seeing?
Sure. Uh, we've talked to him a little bit about it. We haven't done an in-depth study, as this is a district standard. Uh, like I said last time, we're actually reducing that glass between the classrooms and Victory, uh, but it is still a standard that they have that shared door, uh, kind of addressed by hardware at this point. We can, uh, reach out to them and do some more impact.
Yeah, there's conversations, I think, about, and really, it'd be, oh, this is amazing. Uh, right, so your last course, uh, as well as, uh, you tell, maybe some of the options you should. So, if there was a trigger that passed all these other layers, and not even the building, and you got any warning special, which would be only seven layers of protection, and you'll be, what happens if you're going through, and you still have a hard time penetrating? I wonder what it would be. So, lazy and the lock mechanism gives the same layer of protection as our spirit doors, um, and our, and our spirit lessons. So, we think that Chief thinks that's the best solution, um, kind of, uh, resolve that, uh, it's, it would be a situation that, you know, would, uh, touch you. No, yeah, I think that was my thought as well. I think we have to, we have a lot of layers missed, uh, on, or gone through, uh, but nonetheless, it was still, and I appreciate y'all following up on that.
Yes, sir.
Then another question I was, uh, what, uh, what, uh, program should we talk about?
We'll talk to that one.
Sure. Um, the, uh, it'll be construction trains, uh, there's construction lab, which is classrooms, and then our house line. There's, uh, you mean it's three labs and four classrooms?
It is three classrooms.
There's one lab?
Yeah, I believe it's, you're right. I think it was three labs and four classrooms.
Yeah, all of that aside, it's more like a, 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 like, more time, more stress, because the construction side.
Sure. So, um, we'll have, uh, construction will be, um, it will, the courses will be aligned to the electrical plumbing, the, uh, the, the, and so, um, we will have a large shop that will accommodate, uh, very flexible space. So, if you think that you have the opportunity to tour the Construction Careers Academy, um, I believe that Johnson High School, uh, they have very flexible spaces where they could, um, utilize and, and bring out equipment, such as, they're plumbing with a non-installing sink. They can roll those out. They can do that, uh, practice. If they're working on HVAC, they can actually bring out an HVAC equipment, set it all up, get it running, give the students experience, those types of things. So, it's a very flexible lab space that with a lot of storage so that they can push back, uh, at times to, to put away equipment when it's not necessary to be used and then bring it out. They have a lot of overhead, uh, power coming down, and a little bit of air as well.
Yes, sir.
Um, so the students will have access to a lot of the, um, supplies that they haven't necessarily had access to prior to this in our businesses.
And part of that shop area, uh, here?
That's correct.
The, huh?
That's right, yes.
You did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, trustees, just a couple of items to point out in May and June. Uh, obviously, um, here in May next week, several opportunities to, uh, visit some performances as well as the eighth grade recognition nights, uh, at the pack on, uh, Tuesday, the twentieth is Legacy's Eighth Grade Recognition Night. It starts at six P M. And then on Wednesday, the twenty-first, also at the pack, also at six P M. is Heritage Middle School's Eighth Grade Recognition Night. Last day of school on the twenty-second, Thursday, uh, be a three-hour early release. On the twenty-third is Cass Lee's graduation at six thirty at the pack. Uh, and then on the twenty-sixth is Memorial Day holiday, but then on the twenty-eighth, at nine A M. at the Almodome is East Central High School's, uh, graduation. And in your packet, I believe you've got, um, uh, not, uh, you've got the documentation for, um, the Cass Lee ceremony as well as the high school ceremony. And for those of you who will be in attendance for each, uh, if you're going to be in each of those, you have a copy of that in your packet, and you also have it notated, uh, which students, um, you would be assigned for giving diplomas. And of course, as is always the case, if there are specific students that you know personally, uh, y'all do what you do to coordinate that at each of those ceremonies. So, if you have any questions about any of that information, um, let us know. We can make whatever adjustments, um, meet y'all's expectations there. And then in, yes, sir?
We're at five in time, legacy, at six P M.
Thank you for asking, trustees.
So, so it's actually six thirty? Okay, so your calendar says six, but they're both at six thirty? Okay. So, just in your, in your packet, you have an invitation to each of those. Apologize for that on the calendar. It says six, but it's actually six thirty, which is good because you'll be early, preferential seating. All right. And then in June, uh, just a lot of newer training opportunities, and you guys have, several of you have signed up for, for several of these. Uh, but the eleventh through the fourteenth is S L I here in San Antonio. Uh, the S G S Summit, I believe there's a couple of you attending that. That's on the sixteenth and seventeenth in Austin. And then there's a S L I in Fort Worth, which a couple of you, I believe, have signed up for. Mr. Cross will actually be graduating from New Shippazmin, I believe, the twentieth there in Fort Worth. And, uh, we will also in June begin our four-day week, ten-hour days. So, you'll notice the district will be closed on Fridays. Uh, and then your next regular to schedule board meeting is on the nineteenth, uh, six thirty back in the boardroom there in June. Yeah, I'm going to call our Director of Technology, Mr. James Roman, to cut to the podium to provide the board with a little bit more information. Uh, but we have been awarded some grant, a couple of grants that are going to help us to do some work around ensuring that we are safe from a cybersecurity standpoint. So, it does require board action for us to actually receive the funds by way of adoption resolution, which is in your packet tonight. Before you consider taking that action, I'll turn it over to Mr. Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Tiscana. Uh, President Presses, trustees, thanks for having me. Uh, back in twenty twenty-two, the Department of Homeland Security announced the State and Local Cyber Security Grant Program. And this is about a billion dollars funding over four years that we were able to apply for. Uh, we jumped on it right away and put in three applications, two of which got funded, uh, awarded, I should say. And the first one, if I can talk about a little bit, is incident and response planning. And so, this project is essentially the company True North is going to build us a incident response plan that if a cyber incident ever happened, we have a very structured response to that and how to deal with it and neutralize the threats and recover. And further, they're going to walk us through this so that we do some live exercises. And that, that project alone was about twenty-one thousand dollars. So, that's the first one. Um, the second one, which is the I D S N D R Implementation Project, is essentially network monitoring. So, we're going to put an appliance on our network. That appliance will watch all of our traffic. We will have a security operations center who's manned twenty-four-seven, watching for the alerts and anomalies. Uh, they'll alert us because, you know, on days off, on holidays, nights, uh, they'll call if it's appropriate, or just send emails so that we can help, you know, neutralize the threats and find it between the, the things up. And so, that piece is about eleven thousand dollars. So, to- So, together, it's about thirty thousand dollars worth of projects that we're doing, but without the grant, we get that down to about a three thousand dollar cost. And so, I think that this is going to make a huge step in protecting us and improving our security posture, so it's a good, it's a really good thing. Now, what we need, though, is we need a resolutions from the board on these two different ones, and so, that's what we're asking for tonight, is a resolution for each of these two projects, so that we can move forward with the funding. Can I answer any questions you might have?
Yeah, Madam President, I recommend board approval of the resolution for two cybersecurity grants as presented.
I have a recommendation from the superintendent, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I know the board is going to back all resolutions for the two cybersecurity grants.
I have a motion from this prisoner, do I have a second?
Sir?
A second from us, Mr. Santos, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? I have a motion for Mr. Cross, do I have a second? I have a second for Mr. Walkin, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I have a stand as adjourned, do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion for Mr. Cross, do I have a second?
Sir?
I have a second for Mr. Santos, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all those opposed? Motion carries, and we need you to adjourn.